I'm not exactly sure what a roundtable meeting is.
Sometimes they have rehearsals.
Sometimes they have rehearsals, okay. But I think if you feel the need to talk to your representative, this is the time to do it. Again, Thursday, September 26, 1:00 at the library on Homestreet. Any other communications at the moment? Okay. Reports and communications from elected officials?
Just a few things. I did appoint, we have a new HR, Human Resource Director.
Oh, wow.
Jennifer Galbraith. She's got a fast learning curve. This is her first day, so be patient with her, but we have somebody online for that. I was approached a while back by the Natural Resources Defense Council to do an amicus brief for Monroe Falls. They're putting, they're doing an appeal of the court, I forget what district it is, concerning local fracking and zoning issues. I did some homework on that, and I see from, I think this is from the Akron Beacon Journal, that there are about five cities that have signed on as an amicus. Broadview Heights, Huglitt, Mansfield, North Royalton, and the Village of Amesville. I was asked to actually put my two cents in, but I felt that it would be better to actually confer with council before I represent the city in an amicus brief.
Did you say Amesville?
Amesville. Gary Guzman is very progressive. And again, really part of the thing is that, part of the issue, of course, is zoning, local control, and of course, where you can actually drill a well. The third item I have, so I'll leave that after discussion for next committee if you choose to discuss it and go someplace with it. Third one has brought to my attention that there was a, there's a company called, let's see, what is it? Just Energy. They've been saying that they're going around doing a survey for the city for energy consumption. We have not done anything like that. We have not done a questionnaire or any type of survey for energy consumption, so I have to assume that they are flying under false colors. At staff meeting, we discussed this a little bit out. They're not soliciting, obviously, for energy supply, but they're probably trying to figure out who's on and who's off and get it and pitching it. So just be aware, we are not doing a survey. Technically, it's on the ballot to use city funds for, you know, even for that, it would be questionable. So there's a very bright line between what we're trying to do, the ballot issue, as well as what's going on. So I'm a little bit concerned by that. This will be the second time I've heard problems with energy suppliers coming to the door, doing a door-to-door. I had somebody show up at my door, the implication there, and that straight on was that I, it was time for me to renew my energy buy from them. And I said, "No, that's not the case," since I know I didn't do it. I should have wrestled them to the ground and called the cops, but I did not. So I just want to be aware that there's obviously some people who are stretching their truth a little bit when they knock on your door. We are going to put that on the ballot, as you know. I think it's issue three, the county's putting it on as issue two. So anybody who's saying "buy now" and "you might pay later" as a result. And that's all I really have.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Mayor, just to clarify, so they're sanction, they're saying that they're doing it for the city of Athens, and you're saying that is not true?
That is not true. We have not told anybody to do it.
Right.
It's always possible as a student, you know, class doing it, but I don't think so if they're wearing, you know, calling themselves Just Energy.
Okay. So you're warning the public?
I'm warning the public. I'll probably say it in my press comments just Wednesday as well, just to let everybody know.
And thank you, Mayor, for clarifying that, because I had received an email from a couple constituents on the West Side who had been approached and their door had been knocked on, and they were curious about this. And I had forwarded that information on to the mayor, so I appreciate you addressing that. Thank you.
They sounded like they were insistent, too, so that's a little bit obnoxious. We're pretty laid back in Athens, and them coming at them saying, "We're going to come back as we, the city requires this, it's not the way to go."
And I think that's very important for our young people who are living in rentals. If people are approaching them, this is not a good thing.
I have a question, too, about this. I know that we have a, someone would need to have a solicitor's permit in the city of Athens to go door-to-door and to solicit anything, and is there a way of tracking that or monitoring? I mean, we're hearing this, the examples that you gave and the examples that other council members are bringing forward, and if these individuals are just kind of flying in and doing things on the radar?
The conversation I had at staff earlier today, because this, I brought this up, is that they're really not trying to buy anything or sell anything, I should say. So it doesn't fall into our soliciting in terms of purchasing.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that's not the second step. I don't know. Again, I think they're just, they're playing in that gray area of what we control and don't control.
Okay.
I would defer to the law director for more information on that. And again, this is something I received, was it yesterday, I believe, the 15th? So it's news to me. And as I brought it up to staff and saying, "Okay, you know, at this point, if I have solicitors coming at me with anything to do with energy, I might just, I have to approve the solicitor licenses anyway. I might just stop doing that, especially if there's some skirting around." But if they're not soliciting, and they're just knocking on doors and saying, you know, "We're doing a survey," they're probably not in that realm of they have to get a permit.
Do you know, is there currently anyone in the city that does have a permit to be?
Yes, I'm aware it is, but I don't know who it is offhand. I did, I did write, sign one off sometime in the past two months. And I know that we have contact information for this Just Energy. At least, the code director says he does, and that's one thing we'll relay back to them, saying usually by the time we hear about that out of the city at that point. So that's an issue. That's all I have.
That's all?
I have one other question. On the current Monroe Falls situation with the State Supreme Court, is there a deadline on when people need to sign on to that?
I just imagine that they can add it as long as it's still going through the court system. They can still keep adding another name each time.
And I mean, the Supreme Court's going to have a briefing schedule laid out. I don't know exactly what the deadline is on that, and I'm going to speak about that here in a moment.
Thank you.
In greater detail, but we want to move on that fairly soon.
I just have one thing I wanted to bring up. Our 2012 audit is finished. It has been approved by the state. I believe all council members should have received their copy already, but I wanted to let everyone else know that those audits are available online through the Auditor of State's website, and it's actually very easy to find them and pull them up if anyone's interested. That's it.
Questions, comments? Treasurer, Mary Ann McLure?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've already handed all of you the second quarter interest income report attached or the bank account reconciliations for the last, for those three months. Currently, we're at $109,642. The projected was $101,650. The interest rates are starting to creep up a very little bit, so there's hope. And we'll certainly exceed, we've already exceeded projections. I think we'll be, end up at about $140 or $145 by the end of the year.
Questions, yet? Laura, your line?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just picking up briefly on the mayor's comment regarding the Monroe Falls case, I just wanted to give a little bit of background to folks about what exactly that is and what they're asking the city to do on that. This is a case where Monroe Falls had passed an ordinance dealing with zoning and construction permits for the siting of natural gas wells within the city. A local energy company challenged that law, and on appeal to the State Court of Appeals, the court held that the city did not have the authority to pass such a regulation since, as we all know, the state has essentially preempted oil and natural gas drilling as an area of exclusive statewide regulation. So that case is now going on appeal to the State Supreme Court, and what we've been asked to do by the Natural Resources Defense Council, as I understand it, would be to sign off on what's called an amicus brief or a friend of the court brief. And what that essentially is, it is something that, number one, to be clear, does not make the city a party to that case or to that lawsuit. It is simply an opportunity for the NRDC to argue for reversal of this case on appeal, to say that the Court of Appeals got it wrong, the Supreme Court should reverse their ruling on that, and then they're asking if the city would be interested in signing off on that. And then also, in addition to that, as I, again, as I understand it, that they would be doing this free of charge to the city, so this would be of no expense to our taxpayers here in Athens. And I think that the city council is the appropriate body to make that decision as to whether or not we want to get involved with that, and so I'm pleased that the mayor brought this to you. And if in the event we do choose to move forward, I would think probably a resolution just endorsing that position and allowing the mayor to move forward with that briefing timeline would be appropriate at the next meeting.
And the timeline would allow that?
Probably. I think they've already submitted some, but as I say, the impression I got is that this would be ongoing until the actual hearing, and that's usually, takes a long time.
Okay. Any comments? Okay. We're moving on to ordinances for second reading. We had no ordinances for third reading here. So we have ordinance 10313, and ordinance amending ordinance 12212, adopting a fringe benefits package for non-union personnel, introduced by Councilmember Nysely. Nothing? No comments? Okay. Ordinance 10413, and ordinance amending Athens City Code Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter 9.06.04, possession of open bottle or container of beer or liquor to establish a glass-free zone, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this moment, I would kindly request suspension of the rules on the timeliness of this particular ordinance.
Again, because of the time involved in this, we're asking for suspension. All of those council members in favor of suspension signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign if you're opposed. The rules have been suspended, Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would now like to move to adopt ordinance 10413. Second. This particular ordinance, should we vote first, or do we?
No, you hadn't talked about it.
Thank you. This particular ordinance essentially empowers the police department to address the glass-free zone and have a minor misdemeanor established with this. It defines the glass-free zone specifically on city-owned property and allows the City Service Safety Director to temporarily establish these zones, and the time and location. Additionally, making it the minor misdemeanor with a fine, including court costs. So that's the nature of this particular ordinance. In the past, we've included a glass-free zone, but the police department had no means or ability to really enforce, and this now empowers them.
Any other comments? All those?
I have a comment on that. I'm just, I'm going to get this straight in my head. I understand the part about establishing a, you know, an ordinance that has a penalty for violation and so on, a minor misdemeanor. What I'm a little leery and uncomfortable about is, in the past, council has established glass-free zones by a vote, and it's public, and everyone sees it, and the public is aware of it, so no one can ever say, "Well, I didn't know that that was a glass-free zone area," because, well, we give them six weeks of debate and so on. But in this case, if the City Service Safety Director can do it by fiat, then people who would have no intentions of breaking the law could technically wind up having a glass in a glass-free zone that they weren't even aware that, until a moment ago, wasn't. So I'm wondering, how does the public become aware that suddenly what wasn't a glass-free zone now is? How do we address that? Is that a concern? I don't know.
Really what you're talking about is for special events.
Yes.
Previously, we've put this in, I think, for about five or six years now, the glass-free zone, but really, they'd have to cite the ordinance itself and say, "We've declared this such." As for the Service Safety Director deciding what zones would be there, I don't think we would actually be pulling the trigger on that unless it was a, I'd say, a sanctioned event through council, if we're talking about city property. And again, if we start saying, "Okay, when do we see glass out there?" It'd probably be an open container, which would be a problem to start with, anyway. I mean, there are glass beverage containers still in existence, but they're getting few and far between. They're endangered species, so to speak.
Right.
And really, the whole point of it is to do the safety side of it. I don't think we've ever, as far as I know, I've never seen a citation for it, but I couldn't tell you for sure. Most of the time, it would be an open container first, and then there's lots of broken glass down, and that's always a problem, too.
Right, right.
So we're trying to just make it safer.
Right.
So I don't think there's any worry about the Service Safety Director taking charge and running amok, if that's what you mean.
Yeah, that was major concern.
And Mayor, while you may recall, you may know more about this than I do, I seem to recall in my conversations with the chief pile that there would be signage typically up in an area advising the public that, you know, this would be like a street party or kind of environment, that we would typically have signage up to that effect, that it was a glass-free zone. And you may know that better than I would.
Yes, and actually, that's probably the time that she would technically take the incentive is something like one of our block parties, because you don't sanction them.
No.
Okay, so that's when we'd try putting that out in play. And again, most of the time, it's not, you know, it's not a problem, but we try to look at this as a safety issue.
I understand.
The tendency is that some people run around barefoot, and we're trying to keep it safe as possible. It's kind of foolish to do that, but, you know, probably a learning curve.
Right.
I've got a scar on my foot to prove it from a beach, beach many years ago, so.
Any other comments, questions?
Just real quick, I believe that, you know, the main point with this ordinance, though, is just to give definition to an ordinance so that, you know, it is an enforceable ordinance, as opposed to an ordinance that has no definition to it, and it becomes too vague that, again, it's not an enforceable ordinance, so.
The rules have been suspended. Councilmembers, all the councilmembers who wish to adopt ordinance 10413 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 10513, and ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 26 and 27, 2013, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens Halloween weekend, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend this ordinance due to the rapidly approaching date of our Halloween weekend.
Second.
As everyone knows, we will be closing Court Street October 26, part of October 26 and 27, in anticipation of our large Halloween weekend. And in order to do that, we need to pass an ordinance.
And what we're talking about now is suspension of the rules so we can do this more quickly. All those members in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended. Member Pappy?
Mr. President, I move to adopt 10513.
Second.
And as I said before, we need to close the streets so we can have this event and prepare for it.
Rules have been suspended. All those members in favor of adopting ordinance 10513 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 10613, and ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone on Court Street and adjoining sidewalks between Union and State on October 26 and 27, 2013 Halloween weekend. Member Butler?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I would like to move at this moment to suspend this particular ordinance, as noted with Councilmember Pappy's and my earlier comments, upcoming event and timeliness of this.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended, Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this moment, I would move to adopt ordinance 10613.
Second.
Thank you. So echoing along the lines of what Councilmember Pappy acknowledges is that it is Halloween weekend, it's fast approaching, and all of these ordinances, as noted in previous discussions and committee meeting and years past, is to create a safe space. And the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee has been meeting diligently with the executive branch, our City Service Safety Director, and there's been input in the past from police chiefs and whatnot, and the attempt is to create a safe environment. So the street is closed down, no traffic, and these ordinances are in place to create an atmosphere that's safer, starting with this particular acknowledgement of a glass-free zone. Thank you.
Okay. With the rule suspended, all those in favor of adopting ordinance 10613 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance 10713, and ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on October 26 and 27, 2013 Halloween weekend. Again, Member Butler?
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved to suspend this particular ordinance, as alluded to earlier, with the nature of Halloween.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules on ordinance 10713. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended, Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 10713. Thank you. So again, acknowledging the efforts by the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee to create an environment that is safe, or as safe as can be, there's been the establishment of two, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but I believe that there's two grandstands or stages that will be at the opposite end of Court Street. And again, this gives Halloween revelers something to do while they're uptown, participating in Halloween, and there will likely be noise and music coming from those stages. So we are suspending or requesting to suspend our own noise policy. Mayor, you going to add?
Again, the suspension is because of 30 days after the adoption of this, and of course, if we had one more reading, we would run out of time. This is a little bit changed from last year because it specifically says the noise suspended is from any sound stage sanctioned or erected by the Athens Clean and Safe Halloween Committee on Court Street or contiguous property to Court Street. In other words, really what we're talking about is trying to be specific on the noise generation. Some of the conversation with the police chief is that, you know, there are other parties going on on Court Street. They shouldn't be having a full-blown party and making lots of noise themselves. I mean, we're, it's us, it's our sanctioned bandstands that are making the noise, so we're trying to clarify that. So this is a little bit, it's a little bit different animal this time, I believe, from the past, but again, the same intent is to have a good time, I guess.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and we acknowledge that in committee, that's specific, because I had asked about other parties that might be taking place, and so they're not permissible. They're not excused from our noise ordinance that's on the books. Correct.
With the rule suspended on ordinance 10713, all those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 10813, and ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on October 26 and 27, 2013 Halloween weekend. Member Pappy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend 10813.
We have a request to suspend the rules on ordinance 10813. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Member Pappy, the rules have been suspended.
So, Mr. President, I move to adopt 10813. And this ordinance has to do with the vending so we can feed the people who come to town and making sure that we are managing all the necessary permits, as we've discussed in committee in the past, so that everyone is aware of what the necessary rules are regarding that.
And this will allow vendors of other kinds of merchandise?
Correct.
In certain areas?
Correct.
Not just food. Member Patterson?
Could you remind us of the fee schedules associated with?
You would ask me that, wouldn't you? Does anybody remember?
Let's see. Section 3 of 108.
I have it.
Okay.
Thank you, Debbie. Those vendors currently holding a license to vend on East Union Street shall be allowed to continue to operate at a time and location determined by the Service Safety Director and shall pay a special event vending fee of $150. That's, I think, one of the main pieces to understand. There is no registration fee. That will be required for the first space for charitable organizations or civic groups or nonprofits. And a fee of $500 for one space shall be established for all others. Local businesses will be permitted to register for spaces seven days in advance, and administrative rules and regulations are established by the Service Safety Director. So those, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Patterson?
I think that reminding people seven days in advance of the event is important so that we can plan ahead.
Again, with the rule suspended, all those in favor of adopting ordinance 10813 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 10813 is adopted. Now we move on to ordinance 10913, dealing with a kind of a different animal here. Ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Monday, October 28, 2013, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for trick-or-treat hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend 10913.
Second.
We have a request to suspend the rules on ordinance 10913. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended. Member Pappy?
Okay, I move to adopt 10913.
Second.
So this ordinance is also an important Athens tradition for the younger children in town, and it's a way for the Athens Uptown Business Association to encourage families and parents to come downtown and do their own trick-or-treating, and they have events, and it's a fun little activity for those in town. And that goes, we, as Member Sands mentioned, it goes from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. for the trick-or-treat.
Or is it 5:00 rather? 5:00 to 7:00?
Okay, it's wrong in the ordinance.
Is it?
We're on this. It's right in the ordinance. Okay, thank you.
Did we all catch that? The time is from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. We were just reversed a little bit.
Okay. And that's for, like I said, families with young children to come downtown and trick-or-treat. And that's for, like I said, families with young children to come downtown and trick-or-treat.
May I add?
Yes, Member Butler.
I may have misheard. Did we also acknowledge that the parking garage is?
That's the next one.
We're going to.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Thank you.
With the rule suspended, all those in favor of ordinance 10913 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 11013, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Title 7, Section 7.05.26b1, City Garage Metered Parking Rates and Regulations, on Monday, October 28th, 2013, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the Athens Uptown Business Association's trick-or-treat, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
I move to suspend 11013.
I think we'll cut him some slack.
We have a request to suspend the rules on ordinance 11013. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended. Do we have, is that correct? Okay, the rules have been suspended.
I move to adopt 11013, Mr. President. Okay. So we just wanted to make sure the 4:00 p.m., that's so people can get in before the 5:00 o'clock time, I assume, and till 7:00 p.m. on the free parking in the garage for folks that are coming downtown for trick-or-treat.
Could I have a question?
Yeah, I'm all right.
Please.
I might have the same question.
If, so can we go back in ordinance just for a second, and that is that the time on here is incorrect, but it is from 5:00 to 7:30, and is the parking garage closing a half hour before the ending of that event, if it's from 4:00 to 7:00?
So if we should we amend? I suspect there's lots of play in there, so I'm not terribly worried about it.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure this is all.
Administration is going to be flexible.
Actually, we're pretty flexible. Sometimes we don't get the street cleared by 7:30 either, depending on how many kids and how dark it gets. But the fact is that it's pretty flexible at this point. If you want to change to 7:30, you can always amend it and start over, but.
I'm fine with that.
And it's a good time, and realize, a couple of years ago, you know, about five years ago, we never closed the street until we got too many kids there. So this is actually a safety issue there, but I don't think we'd be chasing the parents down and ticketing all the cars up there.
That's my point. Just so everyone's clear that you don't have to clear the lot or whatever.
And to clarify, the actual citywide trick-or-treat is that Thursday, the 31st. So this is for the uptown. So we've got about three different.
So it's a go.
What?
So it's a go.
It's a go.
Okay.
Okay. However, we do need to adopt this ordinance, ordinance 11013. All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. We're moving on to ordinance for first read, ordinance 11313, an ordinance granting the renewal of a revocable license to John Wharton owner, 70 North High Street, to allow a fence on the city right-of-way, introduced by Councilmember Paul.
Pretty straightforward right-of-way issue. This is a renewal, 10-year renewal for a white picket fence that's already, you can drive by, you can see it now. So the city, well, city administration has signed off on this.
Questions or comments? Can I see a hand? No? Moving on, ordinance 11413, an ordinance granting variances from the Athens City subdivision regulations for two parcels located within the three-mile limit at 63 East First Street, the Plains, Ohio, to allow a minor lot split. Again, Member Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is pretty straightforward. As you may remember, that we do have certain allowances within the three-mile limit of the city for certain planning activities. This is a minor lot split, and the variance is when the lot split occurs, it will create two parcels that are not within the subdivision regulations when it comes to the depth and width of the ratio, depth to width. However, the Planning Commission has recommended going forward with this. Questions?
Ordinance 115-13, an ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of approximately 2.037 acres located at 2 Ridgeview Drive. Member Paul again.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been forwarded by the Planning Commission to accept this petition. As you may remember, way, way back in the beginning of the summer, we discussed this. The Planning Commission has reviewed it, has signed off on it. We will read it for three meetings, and we will have a public hearing on October 21st concerning it's, however, pretty straightforward, annexation of a small residential parcel.
Quick question myself. This lot is on the far side of a road. Will that road remain an unplated city road?
I would guess so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll have to find out, but I don't think it's going to change.
We have to maintain, have to be contiguous, so this would otherwise, I haven't had this question brought to me specifically to look at, if we can do, but we can't have a non-contiguous.
Right, and it's contiguous on other sides with the city.
Oh, okay.
It is?
That answer.
Yeah, if you look at the map that's generated there, it looks like it's existing corporation lines just next to Ridgeview, this will jump the road at that point.
Right. So.
Okay.
As far as I know, this is not, there's a house on this, I believe. Yes, but there's nothing else past it.
So it's contiguous to Ridgeview. Ridgeview separates the line from the property.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's across what we, okay, so that's why you asked that question.
That's why I asked the question. And I think the mayor and the law director are saying that it takes care of itself.
No, I'm not saying that. Why don't we just, I would suggest we go ahead and let the mayor's office and I can have this conversation sometime after the meeting.
Okay. Member Patterson.
I do have a question about Ridgeview Drive. Is the west side of Ridgeview Drive within the city limits?
According to this, it is not.
It is not, okay.
No.
Okay. And this is on the east side of Ridgeview Drive?
Actually, north, this is on the, yeah, the southeast side. Looking at the compass point, yes.
So we'll follow up on this.
We'll get back to it.
Okay.
Good question.
However, we do have another ordinance regarding this area, ordinance 116-13, an ordinance designating the zone for the annexation area proposed at 2 Ridgeview Drive. Member Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is also put forward by the Planning Commission. They proposed that it would be a R1 zoning area, which is what all the rest of the surrounding area is.
Okay. No questions about this one. Okay. Moving on, ordinance 117-13, an ordinance amending ordinance 100-13, declaring a real and present emergency, thus obviating the formal bidding procedure for emergency structural improvements to the city building fire escape. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to request suspension of the rules for ordinance 11713 for the obvious reasons of safety and welfare.
Second.
Thank you. And I move to adopt this ordinance. Oh, sorry, we have to vote on suspension? I just assumed.
Okay. However, we will take a vote. We have a request to suspend the rules on ordinance 117-13. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. The rules have been suspended, Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Some people call me clairvoyant. Thank you. In all seriousness, this is terribly important. The escape at this corner of the room, leading downstairs, is requiring structural improvements. I believe the treads are showing significant wear, and this will cost approximately $66,500, but is obviously terribly necessary. I don't know if the mayor also has any other input. We heard from the safety director about this a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, and this is in bad shape. We put it off, we fixed some of it last year, but there's still quite a bit of rust on it. It's a metal structure. Because it's over the $50,000 limit, we would have to go out and bid normally, but the question is trying to get it turned around and done as soon as possible for safety reasons. Again, this is part of the fire escape right now, that we'd have to chalet down or something like that, you know, and it could be troublesome at this point. I mean, it's functional, but it's got rust.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was reminded, thank you, Mayor, I was reminded a couple of weeks ago when we were discussing this very issue, that this is a nerve center for Halloween and that there is many safety personnel, people using this space, and it's necessary to make sure that it's properly prepared.
Any comments or questions? The rules have been suspended on ordinance 117-13. All those members in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 118-13, an ordinance declaring a real and present emergency, thus obviating the formal bidding procedure for repairs to the municipal parking facility elevators. Again, Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'm requesting suspension of the rules for 11813.
Second. We have a request to suspend the rules on 118-13. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to suspending the rules signify the same sign. The rules have been suspended, Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. And secondly, I request that we move to adopt this ordinance as well.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I might lean on other members of council. I believe Member Patterson might have spoke about this as well, but the elevators that we're looking at installing are going to be, I believe, ADA compliant and are being updated. And Mayor, you might?
Part of the price quote includes some ADA, voice activators, voice sounding for so which floors that they would be on. We have four elevators in the three buildings here. We have the parking garage, we have two, one here, and one at the law administration building. They're all, we've been informed by Otis operators that, the elevator operator that maintains it, is that they are, the parts are obsolete, replacing and fixing it is getting near impossible. So we have the money in the parking garage fund to actually fix these first round. We'll start looking, counting our pennies for the law administration building here as well, but we want to get these done as soon as possible. Again, I think the critical ones in the parking garage is because of the height involved. I mean, we wouldn't want to see a failure on a six-story structure versus a three here, but in all cases, we're trying to get this rolling as fast as possible, as well as the fact the, since, you know, to replace, to swap out a different company would be much more costly. I mean, we can actually probably upgrade the Otis system right now, but we're trying to do two things. One is speed, the other one is cost, because to bring in another company and have it retrofitted might not, might be pricier at that point. So there are two different structures on that. The ADA part is the, would be the upgrade that's required. A couple of years ago, we put the sound in because of the issue for the election cycle, which was, you know, we have two, I think, two precincts up here during November for the election, and usually just around this time of year, they come through and say, okay, is this accessible to everybody? And one of the criticisms, of course, was the lack of sound knowledge of when you reach your destination. That was about, I think about four years ago, four years ago that was brought up at the time. So we're adding on, because anything like this to bring it more into compliance.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I see a hand?
I just was going to acknowledge as well, too, that we're looking at spending approximately $86,000 from the parking garage fund that the mayor alluded to.
Just quickly to explain to people, this obviating the formal bidding procedure in cases where we need to do something quickly for safety reasons, what this does is it shortchanges the usual bidding time, which is 30 days, added on to the, at least, added on to the time that an ordinance takes to go into effect. So we're allowing to, something that is a safety issue, as well as ADA compliance. So the rules have been suspended, and all those in favor of ordinance 11813 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 118-13 has been adopted. We'll move on to ordinance 11913, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a new multipurpose mower for the Arts, Parts, and Recreation Department and declaring an emergency, introduced by Member Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, just for clarity, I don't know that this needs a motion to suspend. There is a 30-day bidding, state debt.
Actually, we should suspend because the mower is dead, from what I understand. This is the one we actually talked about earlier this year, where it blew ahead gas it, and we said, oh, we can fix it. Well, we fixed it, and then it blew up again. If you notice, the first section there talks about state contract purchase. So we don't have to go out for a bidding contract because there's a state contract that they've already pre-vetted the process. We do this sometimes with lease cars in particular, so it's a very, you know, they have a, they go out there and look around, say, what's the best deal, and compile it for the state so we don't have to go through the process each time.
Okay.
The way I understand it, so. And this is fairly expensive, I believe, what, $65,000? So it's not, it's not your regular push mower. And again, it's been dead for a couple of weeks now, so. And I know grass cutting is getting done, is, I mean, is, you know, wax, waning, I guess is the term, but, you know, we still have things to do. We're still getting complaints.
Well, therefore, I'd like to make a motion to suspend 119-13. Second. Thank you. Again, the reason for the suspension is because the current mower is dead, and the grass is still growing.
Es compuesto.
All those in favor of, excuse me, suspending the rules on ordinance 119-13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended, Member Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 119-13. Thank you. Again, this is, this ordinance is to purchase a replacement Toro riding lawnmower, which is a multipurpose lawnmower. Also included in, with this purchase would be the addition of a polywire brush, so it's a brush feature to help sweep leaves or probably light snow, as well as the addition of a plow blade that will accompany this particular riding lawnmower, which brings the appropriation up to $65,200 from the Recreation Fund 270 TC500.
Any questions or comments?
How many horsepower is this thing?
56, 56 horse.
What does it run on, diesel or gas?
It runs on diesel.
Diesel, okay.
Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 119-13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Moving on to ordinance 120-13, an ordinance amending the 2013 appropriation ordinance. Member Nysley. Member Nysley.
This particular ordinance has two components to it. One is a grant award that the city is receiving. The second part are some transfers that we're going to be making for, in the TC 100's classification. And I should double-check seeing the signs between the auditor and the mayor. Do we want to suspend this tonight?
I was just asking the same question. Most of TC 100 transfers aren't necessary, but the CDBG money for, this is for the awarding of the formula dollars to rehab the house on Richland.
Right.
We'd like to get started on that as soon as possible. So I would humbly request, at least for, you know, to have this suspended.
Of course, Mr. Mayor. So we move to suspend the rules on this particular ordinance, 120-13.
Second.
The reason being is stated by the mayor that we have a grant that will enable us to do rehabilitation on a house that the city owns, and we can start the work this fall.
So, with that in mind, all those members in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Member Nysley, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 120-13.
Second.
And as stated earlier, it has two parts. The first part, the CDB, the Community Development Block Grant. And so that's $75,000 that the city will receive to provide rehabilitation for a house owned on Richland Avenue. It has the advantage of being fairly close in, within a mile and a half of downtown area, so easy access. It's on the bus route, and we're hoping that we can incorporate some parts of making it accommodating people with disabilities. So we'll be putting some universal features in this home, we hope, if we can do that all. The second part of this appropriation tonight has to do with what we call the Transaction Class 100's. And those are for salary and personnel for the staffing for the city. And when those charges are made to the city, they come out of different departments. So what you're going to hear me listing is a classification of different departments. Several of them, over half of the money comes from the general fund, and the rest come from funds that are called proprietary. So money comes in for specific purposes. So the different sections of them, there are about six. So we're going to have $20,000 that's going to go to the general fund lands and building. And, once again, this is for personnel. And then $120,000 to the general fund police. $1,500 to the CCA grant, and this is particular grant money that we have for the city. Then $3,900 for the driving, driving under the influence court grant that we receive. And then 20,000, these last two are for proprietary departments. One of them is the Water Maintenance Fund, that's $20,000. And then $20,000 to the Water Administration Fund. And so this is for a combination of some retirement payouts, some comp time, and some overtime in the various departments. Yes, Auditor Heck?
Just got to go ahead and comment that I think it probably is a good idea to suspend that and get this all accounted for in our budget. If you notice, the amount being appropriated in the general fund is $140,000. That's a lot of money that needs to be appropriated, so it's not, doesn't look like it's available in the budget as we go into the end of the year.
Thank you.
With the rules being suspended, all those in favor of adopting ordinance 120-13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. We have a resolution. Resolution 11-13. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I do have a point of clarification. This will need three, it does need three reads. So I will go through an explanation tonight very briefly of it. Those of you who've got the full agenda packet tonight, you might see in the back of it that there is an amount for the general property tax. And what happens each year is that the Athens County Auditor certifies for the city their estimates of their estimated resources for our millage. That is revenue that the city can expect during the course of the year. So once we receive the certification from the county, then we need to say, yes, we recognize it, and we will be operating within those limits. So that's what we're doing with this particular ordinance.
Is this be suspended?
Yes.
It's due October 1st.
Oh, that's right.
This always happens. It usually comes to my office while council is on recess, so.
That's right.
We don't have six weeks.
We don't have six weeks, so.
But it's due October 1st.
And so, of course, for the auditor, I move to suspend the resolution 11-13.
All those in favor of suspending the rules on resolution 11-13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules are suspended for this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt resolution 11-13. And I'll spare you all the description again, but it is the millage certification that we have received from the county, and so we're moving to accept this, as it's been determined by the Budget Commission.
This time, we're doing this...
And again, this represents about $822,000.
And we're suspending the rules and voting on this because of the timeframe in which this has to be.
Member Nysley, I just have a question. At the back of that last page, just so maybe people understand, total estimated revenue does not include PU or PPT reimbursements. Might want to say what that, can you help us, Auditor Heck, maybe?
Personal property tax.
Okay.
I don't know what the PU is.
What does PU stand for?
Is that in the resolutions, or?
It's on the very back page of the attachment that came from the audit, the county auditor.
Oh, I see, this one.
This is basically just the property taxes. There are other taxes that we get from assessments and levies and, you know, personal property, and there's a lot. We could show them to you sometime. But this is strictly the property taxes on the land.
It's in the city limits.
Yeah. I would make a comment, too, that if, most of you probably saw the article in the paper about the changing of tax status for Holzer Clinic. And the effect it would have on the city. And although we wouldn't be hit nearly as hard as some of the other entities listed, there was a comment in there from the county auditor's office that they were waiting for, you know, input from those affected. So I don't know if any of you are interested in commenting, but another $10,000 for the city is another $10,000.
I would be interested, yes.
Should we discuss that at committee next week?
Sure, I'd like to. I just, I've been out of town quite a bit, and I just read the article, so.
I think, because there's history to Holzer Clinic and how they moved to that location, I think there's a lot of history that probably needs to be reviewed with them asking for tax exempt status.
Yeah. It's a change. So, yeah, not only would they become tax exempt, but anything we've gotten from them this year for last year would be taken off the rolls, probably. I think it goes back to 2012. I'd have to look at that more closely, but anyway, we'll talk about it some more.
That's another issue that we are going to talk about then next week. So, the rules have been suspended. All members in favor of adopting resolution 11-13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same, same sign. This resolution has been adopted. We do have some announcements on other business. We talked at committee meeting last week about revising some rules of council, and we have the law director to explain why we don't have a ordinance on our agenda.
Yeah, basically, in reviewing, I had reviewed the proposed changes that came out of that committee meeting and added a few suggestions of my own to Debbie, speaking with Debbie earlier today. Basically, since we are not passing an ordinance or a resolution here, we're not passing, we're not creating law or establishing any kind of policy. We're only, the council rule only pertains to basically how we operate the meeting. So as long as everything that we're proposing to do is consistent with the requirements of EORC, you know, we can pretty well, your council can pretty well do it at once, so long as it votes to do so. So we would just need a motion and second to make the amendments that were proposed. And I think all members have a copy of that. And then we would just need to vote on that like any other motion, and of course, those rules would still be subject to being changed in the future if council wished to do so.
So what we had talked about the most was the fact, was the issue of moving council meetings from 7:30 to 7:00 p.m., so that all council meetings would begin at 7:00 p.m. instead of some 7, some 7:30. And so we kind of expected to have an ordinance on the agenda, but we, the law director is saying that we don't really do it that way. We could just do it by motion. So, does anybody have a motion to?
I have a motion that we...
Accept these changes?
Changes to...
And there are some minor changes that the law, that our secretary has already made, some...
Revisions.
Revisions about adjournment, et cetera. Member Butler?
Yeah, it's a quick question about, one might be the discussion part of this, again, if we had another thought that we've considered in the meantime. Is this appropriate moment to ask a quick question?
Sure.
You know, something I don't know if we addressed when thinking about the time change was, we're often visited by students in the community and professors, and knowing that they're on a semester system, I don't know if we jumped to this change, if that would then throw off their class schedule or their ability to be here this semester. So I don't know if it's something that we want to take into consideration or ask and perhaps consider the change next semester.
There's a gentleman right there.
So I don't know if there's opportunity to comment on that, or?
I would recommend if you wanted to get more feedback, you would probably want to table this, or at least bring it up another time, opposed to engaging...
Doing it now. Okay.
Just my suggestion.
But would that mean that, in order to ask the question of the class that's here for council, they would have to come during committee meeting?
No, I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm just suggesting that if we don't feel like we've got enough information to make this vote, that perhaps we would make it another time. Or move forward with the vote as we've got a motion on the table to do that right now.
We have a motion on the table, and was there a second?
We don't have a second.
Was there a second?
No.
I didn't hear one.
No, no second yet. You did, from down there?
Yeah.
Member Patterson?
I have a question, because I know that one of the things that we just, and maybe this was said, there's one of the things that was discussed was, again, the time, not just time, but when recess began, changes in recess, is that part of this as well? Or are we just talking about the time, just? Time of day?
Time of day. The recess was another discussion.
Okay.
Okay. Question to council members, shall we hold this up for two weeks?
I think we should just vote on it and...
Sure. I'll assume we're good.
We could change it later.
We can always change it later.
If it becomes problematic.
So we have a motion and a second?
I see a lot of people going, yeah, we can, you know, 7 o'clock's easier.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table, and we have a second to that motion to change meeting dates of, for council member, council meetings from 7:30 to 7:00 p.m. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion is passed. If we need to amend this, then we will.
Debbie will remind us before the next council meeting.
And then I have an announcement to appoint, to approve appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Who was doing that?
Thank you. The, there was a position on the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals, for an alternate. And so Ed Baum has expressed his desire to be a volunteer on the BZA as an alternate. And for people who, you know, many people know Ed, but for those who don't, he used to be a council member, and he was the chair of the Planning and Development Committee. He's been involved in the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, and he will be great, because he knows the code inside out. And so I really appreciate Ed coming forward and doing this. It's a difficult job.
Did you make a motion?
I would like to motion to accept his volunteering.
Second.
Do we have a second? All those in favor of the motion to appoint Ed Baum to the Board of Zoning Appeals signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. And now we need a motion to accept the auditor's financial reports for the month of August. We have seen those, they were in our box. All those in, we have a motion to...
A motion that we accept the auditor's report.
For the?
For the month of August.
Month of August.
Second.
A second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This, we are accepting the auditor's financial reports for the month of August. Thank you. We have an opportunity for any citizens who wish to speak to City Services on issues not covered. No one tonight? We have a committee meeting coming up.
Planning and development?
Planning and development needs to...
Finance and personnel.
Finance and personnel. Possibly some others. We have, we're going to have some visitors on Monday night. High University has recently authorized a economic, an economic...
Report?
Not development, but...
Impact.
Impact statement. And Pam Benoit, who is the provost of university, and Steve, Mr. Stephen Golding, who is the vice president for finance, would like to come and present this to us on our next meeting night, next committee night, which is Monday. They are, would like to be here at 7:00. They figure a short presentation, 15, 20 minutes, and then I figured we'd have time for some questions or comments, so.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If there's an opportunity, if there's a prepared report, if we could see that ahead of time to review it so we could be prepared with our questions, I think that would be helpful if they were willing to do that.
Okay, I can pass that along, and if so, I will bring them up to the office within the next two to three days. Okay. Anything else that we need to move on? Okay. Mayor, are we getting ready to say something?
Is there a quick, a quick question? Is there an auditor finance committee meeting this week?
Yes, Wednesday, 2:30.
Thank you.
Okay. We are adjourned.